The time is 5:45. We want to go ahead and commence our Civil Service Commission meeting scheduled for July 16, 2020 at 5:45 PM. Location is City Hall, Council Chambers. We will now consider how it sounds in session.
Oh, okay, I got a empty plan.
Okay, you have another commission committee, but we're going to go ahead. We do have a quorum here. First item on the agenda, second item on the agenda is approval and our correction of minutes for our regular scheduled meeting held on May 21, 2020. Commissioners, have y'all had a chance to review the minutes of that meeting?
Yes, I have.
Any comments or observations?
No, not for me.
Okay, that being the case, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting?
Second.
Not second.
Motion and second that we approve the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes held on May 21, 2020. All in favor say aye. Oppose is nay. Ayes have it. The third item on our agenda for tonight from the fire department, one-year certification. Chief Loffey, are you on to talk with us briefly?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, we have five firefighters I'd like you to certify. We've got firefighter Ryan Kalusik, Mark Reese, David Milner, Logan McGee, and Colter Antinson. They've all completed their one-year certification. I would like for you to certify them. They've done a wonderful job.
Mr. Nelson, did a comment from your office?
No comments. They're awesome.
You're very good. Commissioners, any comments or questions for Chief or human resources?
No, no.
Not for me.
Not for me.
Okay.
Make a motion to where you sit there on your certification.
Second on the floor?
Second.
We've got to wait till our second term gets, clerk gets back.
Yeah, we have.
Chief has to step away from him.
I missed that motion.
No, we go come back and do it again for your purposes.
I'm sorry.
Is this you?
No, Chief, you're right where you're at.
Make a motion that we accept the one-year certification.
I have a second.
It has been motion and second that we approve the one-year certification. Any discussion? Well, all in favor say aye. Oppose is nay. Ayes have it. Certification is approved, Chief.
Good, congratulations.
Let me keep up the good work. Okay, we now move down to the old business. We have none for this meeting. Number five is new business requesting approval regarding new and amended Police Department policy manuals. And copies were included. I had a chance to look at some of those. Commissioners, have you all had a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
Chief Hibs, would you discuss further, make a few more comments about this policy, please?
Sure. Three of the policies are existing policies, and we made a couple of small changes to them. One of the policies is brand-new, and that one is the Emergency Response Team, which is a riot team. Basically, with everything going on, we want to have a team that we can, you know, use for Jacksonville because we have had some protests, but also we want to form a team to assist with the other agencies and have some officers trained in that sort of thing. We do not have that right now. We do not have the equipment. So this is just a policy to set up what we want to do in the future. So it'll be some time before we actually implement that, but I need a policy to start it. The other one is, go ahead.
You see that policy taking place between now and the end of the year?
Yeah, I want to get the policy in place and approved so that I can start forming the team. The policy just lays out how we want to form the team, equip it, and what their role will be.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Chief? Mr. Nelson, any comments from your office?
No, sir.
Okay, that means that I entertain a motion to approve these policy changes. Make the motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve the policy change from the Police Department.
Are you a second on the floor?
We'll make that.
Make a motion and second that we approve the policy changes. All in favor say aye. Oppose is nay. No nays, ayes have it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any announcements from anyone? Any announcements for this meeting tonight? If not?
Make a motion that we enjoy.
I have a second.
Do they have a motion and second that we join this meeting? All in favor say aye. Oppose is nay. This meeting is now joined.
There you go. I had that.
Thank you all, Commissioners, for coming out tonight.
Good seeing you again.
Yeah.
Good seeing everybody, so I'm not saying.
You don't have anything on. This is not. You don't have anything on. Tomorrow, tonight, whatever. Because I need something that I know that I, which I'm going to have problems. I put it that way. I know they're fucked up. Let them get that fired and they will. That's what I, that's what I want to show. Yeah, they pay that fine, they sell over there.
What's your, what's your email address?
AIDD.
AID.
427.
427.
At AOL.com.
I just said chief.
Thank you. I pull it off. It comes by phone.
We're doing okay.
You sure? Kayadee.
Kayadee.
Kayadee. 27 at AOL.com.
Yes, ma'am. What is that?
I heard it. We're not. I'm going to call for me tonight.
Second, she says statewide mask mandate and COVID update.
Yeah, she sent it today.
She sent it to him. Did you make it to him?
Yeah, send it to him.
It's all over the news. I was talking to somebody today and he got a text from his wife and she's telling me that she saw it on. I don't know why my. Yeah, you got it yet? Let me check again.
Well, it says it when.
Yeah, I got it. I got it soon. They wipe it and they.
There you go.
That's what I need. They start talking to you. Hey, you don't want to do it? Pay them off, fine.
Oh, come on, why, for a mask to be.
You can't get away from that topic like that. Go get over there.
Yeah, you go, you go find a sofa in the street.
That's what I'll be, I know that's where I'll be at.
No, one of the extra bedroom.
All right, man, thank y'all.
Okay. You too. Be safe.
You guys, y'all take care.
You can't, you can't, you're going.
That is our new album.
Take care.
Yes, yes.
Is that Mr. DS?
Yes.
Mute. We're unmuted. And then you hit mute.
Hello, Susan.
Hello.
How are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good.
I'm going to march you downstairs.
Hello, Charlotte. How are you?
Hello, Ms. Barbara. You doing all right?
I'm doing good.
Everybody, everybody moving.
Hello to everybody that's on. Hey, Barbara. Hey, Mary.
Hi, Bob.
How are you? Good. Hey, Susan. Hey, Charlotte. I'm Bishop Bowden.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm good. You?
Very great.
I'm Bishop Bowden. I didn't know he was on there. Yeah, I heard him.
Good evening, everybody. How many council members do we have on?
Three, I know of.
Well, Terry.
I'm here.
Hello, Ms. Nelson.
And Barbara, Bishop. Who else is? Any other council members on?
Mary Twitty.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, Bob.
I see these phone numbers. I don't know who they are.
I think I've seen Les Collins get on a while ago.
Les, are you with us?
With you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear him.
I hear him.
Yeah.
Not very loud, but he's there.
There's Bowden. There you are.
It's ready on.
He got that city of Jacksonville around him. Yeah, I might forget. Some more on. Is Reedy? You made anything about Reedy? He said he getting on. We need at least seven on to do the ordinance. So do we have enough for a quorum, Susan?
I can't see who else on. There's something blocking my screen.
Okay. Okay, starting with, okay, Bishop Bowden, you're here, right?
Mr. Barry, do you want me to call Rob?
Yeah. Okay, all right, it's 6:02, and I call the council meeting order. Please call the robe.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Bowden.
Here. I had done mute. Here.
Councilmember Sykes. Councilmember Zansing.
Terry, you need to unmute.
Was that Councilmember Sykes? I mean, Zansing.
Unmute, Terry.
Okay. Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Mashburn is on. I spoke with her. Councilmember Trailer. Councilmember Twitty is on. I spoke with her. I'm here. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm here.
Currently, I have four access and one open seat. That is five present and five absent.
Is that a quorum?
No, sir, it is not. Not enough for you to pass an ordinance.
It's not enough to pass an ordinance, but is it enough to pass a resolution and put it in order for the first reading? I just got off the phone with Reedy Ray. He's trying to dial in now. Okay.
If we can get Reedy, we can go ahead.
Okay.
We'll get somebody else, then we can go through the ordinance if we get to the law.
Right. Well, we'll just have a special meeting if we don't, if we only get on first reading. Councilmember Smith was going to try to dial in, and so was Councilmember Sykes, but he's in Wyoming, and Councilmember Trailer's on a airplane.
Okay. Very good. So sorry, when I called you, I didn't even respond. Is it on? Is it on audio maybe? Call, call back in, okay?
Can anybody hear me now? It's Gary Sykes.
Hey, Gary.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Well, I was, I was on earlier. Just, I was having some technical difficulty. Sorry.
All right, so thank you, Gary. That gives us enough to get started and maybe Councilmember Ray joining to the minute.
Yes, we can, we can proceed now.
Okay, all right. I want everybody to join. Bishop Bowden lead us in a prayer, and then we'll have the pledge.
Sure. First of all, we have to follow the Lord's instructions in this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. Go, Scotty. Scott?
Praise the Lord.
To the flag of the United States.
We're supposed to get a flag up on us. Are we getting a flag, Scott?
Yep, it's up there.
Okay, I see Barbara. All right, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Public for which it stands.
For which it stands, one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, we've already had a robe call, so you're good with the robe call?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, and Scott, do what you can to help Reedy get in. Do I hear anything about the minutes? So you have the presentation minutes, and we have approval of the minutes of May 21st. Do I hear anything about the minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
Second. I got a motion and second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
All right, seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, very good. All right. All right, I have a consent agenda. Do I hear anything about the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, you got a motion in a second. All right, any discussion? All right, seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, they carry. All right, now we got our Water Department, Sewer Department, wastewater department ordinance, ordinance number 1635. The refinancing that, remember, back in February, we looked at this, and this is the refinancing of those bond. If it's okay with everybody to give Reedy a chance to get on, because we need seven to do this, I'm going to skip over it and hold it to last and do the rest of agenda and hope number seven gets on. So we'll put that to the side for now. Is that, everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we need to make a motion or just say, yeah, we okay with it?
Do we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I have seven all of them in presence.
Do we need a motion to put it to the end of the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
It's a deviation in the agenda.
Okay, the next item of business is a request to set a bid bond for the Hill Street drainage improvement.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, and here, second.
Second.
Okay, we received two bids on this. The lowest bid was thirty-seven thousand, is that right? Jimmy, are you still on? And so this is going to, i- if y'all remember when the nations and their neighbor were there and they were having a problem with their yard falling in, this will solve that problem for them.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. Yeah.
Something that's been needed and so put it out for bid.
Absolutely.
Be a, 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 a good, nice drainage ditch that will serve them well.
Mayor, has, has anyone contacted the family to let them know we're doing something about it?
Hmm, no, sir, I haven't. But that's, I'm going to make myself a note.
Yeah, I, I'm going to request that Mr. Oakley contact them and let them know that we are.
They'll be glad, they'll be glad to know this.
Yeah.
I don't guess Mr. Oakley's on, is he?
Yes, can you hear him, Mayor?
Okay, this was thirty-something thousand, right, Jimmy, for the drainage?
That's correct. Low bid. I don't have it in front of me, but yes.
About thirty-five, thirty-six thousand.
Right, I think.
Could you tell us a little bit about what this is going to look like?
Yes, these are actually, the pipe that's in there now is a round metal. This is going to be a square concrete, a rectangular concrete box over that has a hundred-plus-year shelf life that'll be good in the ground. The metal pipes are bad and leaking around all the. And this will be a permanent fix that'll last a long time.
Okay, thank you. Do any council members have any discussion on this?
I do, Bob. I wanted to ask Jimmy, Jimmy, have we used this company before?
Yes, there's two main companies in the state of Arkansas that bid it, and both of them are very reputable, long-term, well, they're good companies. So I, I would like to accept the low bid. Either one of them has been acceptable. We'll go with the low bid of Scarlet Industries and no funds, or budget it and come out of street fund.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. I don't think we had a car lock committee meeting.
No.
All right, so our next item of agenda is Resolution 796. And it's, it's a support of the, well, since fair trade, federal emergency support, but it's the, the National League of Cities has asked cities to do this, and this league, you know, has asked us to do it. So we're doing this as the federal government to help cities get some relief during this COVID-19 pandemic. Okay, to entertain a motion to read Resolution 796.
Don't move.
Second.
All right, got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Resolution 796, Jacksonville, Arkansas is essential in support of fair, direct federal emergency support to reopen and rebuild local American economies.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion to approve and adopt Resolution 796.
Hello.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those nay. All right, the motion carry. All right, our next one is 796, 797. It is the council showing an support of the chamber's effort for the respect and protect the chambercomers to have businesses require people wear masks when they come in. And so I entertain a motion to put, to read.
Don't move.
All right. Got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. All right, motion carry. Okay, read it, please, Stephanie.
Resolution 797, a resolution in support of the Jacksonville Chamber of Promises Respect and Protect Wear Mask Initiative.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion to approve and adopt 797.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All right, motion carry. Now, our next one is the face mask ordinance 1634. In light of the governor's emergency order that he discussed that's going to be enacted on Monday. Mary, do you have anything you'd like to say about this?
Yes, I'd like to pull this ordinance since the governor mandated it starting Monday on the mask.
Okay, and Bishop Bowden, Councilmember Bowden, is that okay with you?
I agree with it. I'm going to step up.
That's good, good. All right, I appreciate y'all. This one is pulled.
Thank you.
Has Reedy got one yet?
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Bishop Bowden.
Is Reedy on yet? Well, so it looks like we're going to have a special meeting. So we're going to be able to put it on first reading, and we're going to be able to.
I think, I think we have, Susan, can you tell us how many we have on?
By my count, we have seven.
Oh, we do have seven?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so this is the wastewater ordinance, ordinance. Alright, so this is the, uh, wastewater ordinance, ordinance number 1635, uh, to refinance, if you remember, we'll refinance our, our, our bonds and save us some money. So, I entertain a motion to place ordinance 1635 on the first reading.
Don't move.
Move.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second, any discussion? This is the one we looked at in February. Alright, roll call.
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sykes.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanding.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray. Just checking. Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Ordinance number 1635, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of wastewater refunding revenue bonds, series 2020, and one or more series for the purposes of refunding the city of Jacksonville, Arkansas wastewater refunding revenue bonds, series 2016B, providing for the payment of the principal and, uh, principal of and interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, uh, Leanne, would you care to explain what we're doing and why we're doing it?
Thank you Mayor, I'm sorry I had trouble getting off mute. Um, and thank you city council members. Uh, again, Leanne Burnett with Stevens, and as he mentioned, we were before you in February, and we were directed to start the process, and then, of course, with COVID-19, the market moved away from us, and now I'm happy to report that the taxable market does look favorable once again for the utility, and, uh, we are looking at, um, savings, um, the, the early indications, which of course could change before pricing, but over a million dollars in savings to the utility over the life of the bond issue. So, this ordinance before you sets the parameters for the financing, uh, and then we would come back to you in August with a resolution that would demonstrate to you the exact results and that they met these parameters.
Councilmembers, you have any questions, Leanne? Okay, seen no questions. I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading and place on second reading. Suspend the rules.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Alright, got a motion, second, any discussion? Alright, seen none, roll call.
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sykes.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanding.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Okay.
I'll take that.
Les did say yes, didn't he?
Okay, swear to you. I think that's mine. He was on there, I don't, I haven't heard him.
I haven't, I heard him like, he wasn't, it's like his, uh, speaker wasn't working well.
Yeah.
He was on there.
Did he, did he say anything?
Councilmember Collins.
Might be muted.
I can't hear you. Hold on, I'm gonna put him on speaker.
Aye.
Say it again.
There you go.
Aye.
Alright, we got it. I'm gonna leave you over here on the side, Les. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, put it on, uh, suspend the rules and put it on third and final reading.
Don't move. Second.
Alright, we got a motion, the second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sykes.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanding.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Take off, Les.
Aye, I can't hear Susan.
Oh, okay. Uh, then I'll leave you here where you, can you hear through my phone right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, I'll leave you there, be quiet. Alright. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 1635.
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion, second, roll call.
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sykes.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanding.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Good job. Alright, uh, I would entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the emergency clause.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second.
Alright, got a motion, the second. Any further discussion? Seen none, roll call.
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sykes.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanding.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Alright, we've approved the emergency clause, we're ready to go. Leanne, thank you so much for your help and input, and wastewater, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we have an appointment to the Water Commission that won on our agenda. Susan, you have the, I don't have even the person's name that it is.
Let's start.
So would you?
Let's start with the motion, second, to suspend the rules and place the item on the agenda.
Okay, need a motion, second, to approve the move?
Don't move. Second.
Alright, got a motion, the second. Alright, go ahead and tell us who it is and where they'll be serving, and when they'll end.
Uh, Water Department Commission has requested the appointment of Mr. Timothy B. Thomas Jr. to serve the unexpired term of Mr. Graves, and that term is to expire on April 20th, 2022.
Okay, I didn't, uh, any discussion about this? Alright, seen none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay? Alright, so, I wanted to talk to you a minute about the, uh, Arkansas Municipal League, uh, conference coming up in August, and we're going to, uh, it's gonna be an online virtual meeting. It's free, so you can register yourself, or you can call Michelle and have her register you. She'd be happy to do that. So, uh, it's, uh, it'll be all virtual. We won't be going, made anywhere. She's already signed me up, so, uh, and the only other thing, uh, that I might have is, uh, a little face mask. And Dr. Smith, they talked about a little bit and the purpose of them. These are surgeons, wear these to keep their, their germs out of your body when they're operating you. So, to not think they protect other people when you're within six feet would be incorrect. If they're protecting you during surgery, then they will protect you from this COVID, for other people from you, if you happen to have it. So, please, wear a face mask when you're close to people. Council, do y'all, does anyone else have anything, any doubt, or anything they want to bring up?
Bob, I have one.
But, uh, I did, uh, actually have some input for the, uh, minutes.
Okay. Go ahead.
The agenda from, uh, page six of the pot, we did not have a roll call vote, but it's, it's written like a, uh, a cross between a roll call and not for the, uh, planning commission appointment.
Alright, I think they're so noted. Thank you. Alright, anything else to come before the council? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's Reedy Ray. Did y'all get my, my presence?
You what?
That's Susan, did she get my presence there at the meeting?
Who is this?
We do now. Reedy Ray.
That's Reedy Ray.
Uh, I, he needs-
You have Reedy Ray.
Alright, good to see ya.
I've been on all the time trying to talk. I don't know what happened. Okay.
Well, I had to call Les on the telephone, so he, he's using my telephone to talk to everybody here. But we got everything done, so thank you.
I agree.
Appreciate you. Alright, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Alright, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Alright.
Thank you.
Bye Susan.
Bye y'all.
Bye bye. Bye y'all.
Got another one now?
Sure do.
Okay.
This is my third one.
Third one, there you go.
Yep.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, we'll see you later.
Yes, sir.
I thank you, sir.
Thank you. He said, a couple weeks. Thanks, sir, I appreciate it.
Alright, so she's talking.
Yes, sir.
She gave me a thumbs up, though.
She gave me a thumbs up, I appreciate it. Got a lot of talk, she was a lot of these other, was that good? See what we do? Time? Oh, no problem, yeah. Hope I don't need it for a while.
Well.
Oh, yeah, six.
I'll put this under mic over here closer to me and see if that helps out. Yeah, okay, I'll talk more in that direction and see if that works out. It is? Okay. Wow, okay, good. Alright, see you later. Okay, it's time for our meeting to start. Let me give a man's line.
I'm okay here, everyone is here.
Uh, have you got a screen on down there?
Yes.
Okay, so if you would, down there. No, I guess I'm gonna need you in chairman, because that's where the camera is. We'll be okay. Alright. Alright, so. Councilmember Sykes, do I have you on?
You do.
Thank you. And Commissioner Montgomery, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Seeing everyone is present, if you'd like to begin the meeting, sir.
Okay. Glad to open the meeting, uh, the board group of just, just, uh, adjustments meeting for, uh, today. Uh, seeing that we have all of our members pretty much present, uh, seeing if you want to reiterate from the last meeting.
Well, we, all we need is a correction motion to correct or approve.
Okay, could I have a motion to correct or approve the, the minutes from the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes from the last meeting?
A second.
There you go.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make a motion for last meeting. All the neighbors, are they live?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, I'm sure. Okay, it appears as though we have, uh, enough members present to have a forum, so I would like to get into the first item on the agenda for today, and, uh, that is, uh, variance, a variance request. Uh, and the first one, uh, was a building setback variance for 200 with Fox Lane, petitioner, but, really? I, I believe that that's the variance because automatically been approved. Is everyone aware of that?
Well, we need a motion in second from the board to approve it, good, and this current order and going forward.
I make a motion that we approve the variance.
I, uh, second the motion on that.
It has been moved and properly seconded, that we, uh, approve the variance for going forward, um, all of them.
Aye.
Don't oppose? The variance, uh, has been approved. Number two on the agenda.
We'll close the public hearing and open a new one.
Can I have a, a motion to?
No, no, we just, you just announced it, and I took care of that for you, so we're good to go.
Alright. Uh, the, um, uh, meeting for, uh, has been, uh, approved, and, uh, uh, that's probably second. So, the next item on the agenda, a, a portable carport, the 1609 school drive, petitioner, Donna Martinez. Is Donna present?
Yes.
Okay. And Donna could do, would you give us some information, um, justification for, uh, the petition?
I'm not understanding you very well, but I'm trying to get a prefabricated carport in the front of my house, on my driveway.
Okay. Um, could you kind of give us a little background as to, uh, why you need this, or why you're present?
Yeah, my eighty-year-old mother's moving in with me and she wants her car protected, so.
I see. Then would you, you could, um, Donna's, uh, request, um, are there, is there any further discussion of this?
Uh, Jimmy, Jimmy, will you please speak to the, uh, the ordinance on the carports for the city of Jacksonville as they stand out towards the, uh, the front of the property?
There you go. Yeah, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, currently, um, there's no structures can be built in front of the build line, which in that area, I believe is thirty-five feet. So, uh, my understanding that this, they, the request was carport would be in front of that, so that's why they would have to get a variance or they could not construct it in front of the house. That's about it in a nutshell.
What does that mean? I thought this was about a variance.
Yes, um, anytime you want to, um, build a request or something that's not meet the ordinance, uh, usually the requestor has the opportunity to request a variance, and that's why, uh, you were sent before the Board of Adjustments to request that.
Okay, so now what?
Whether heard your arguments, why you wanted it, and then it'll be up to them to grant or deny.
Okay.
Jimmy, is it, is it required to have a hardship to, to, uh, pass this variance or by the question?
It's my understanding, y- yes, sir, I understand in the past, the hardship is usually, uh, something that goes with the lot and the property, not with the person.
Thank you.
Front yard setbacks.
So, are you clear, are you clear on, uh, the process, um, for any kind of variance or requests?
No. No.
Okay. I, I, in my opinion, not in my understanding, that, um, any person, uh, citizens of that, you know, that the first step is to, uh, make a, uh, request for a, uh, officially that request has to be, I believe, done in writing. And the second step is that that request then goes before, uh, the Board of Adjustment, which is what's happening today.
Yes, okay.
At, at that time, you would have, or will have, an opportunity, do have an opportunity to, uh, explain to the board. And to justify to the, to the board as to why, uh, a variance should be issued.
Okay, well, like I said, my mother's moving in with me and she would like her car covered, and lots of my neighbors have them.
Okay. Um, any other, any other comments from any other board member? Uh, Donna, you're here from, uh, Jim.
Jimmy, does this, um, does this carport extend past the, uh, the build line on the, on the, uh, the, the measurements that we got from on the agenda?
Uh, Melissa, can you hear me? Uh, I haven't, it wasn't submitted to me, it submitted to the city clerk, I'd had to refer to her, I guess, because I never got a copy of, they, they submitted her request in the drawings, I guess. Susan, can you, can you address that?
The one we got was a ten by fifteen point twenty-seven five foot on the, the, uh, the picture from Lowe's. That's, uh, I mean, either that's an example or that's an ideal carport that's gonna go there.
That's correct, that's what was put into the agenda, that's on page seven.
And yes, that would stick out into the front build line, past that thirty-five foot behind the street right away.
Right, okay, thank you, sir. And is this carport gonna be permanent?
Uh, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Comments from anyone? Um, the, um, just for your, uh, your affirmation, um, this request is, uh, to, would extend, um, beyond the normal setback, uh, in that, in that community. And, uh, it appeared as though, uh, a heart, no hardship has been, uh, even countered, and also have, uh, explained to the board members. Um, so at this time, uh, we'd like to put it up for a, a motion, uh, but before doing that, uh, I don't, I don't see and feel that, um, there has been an adequate, uh, hardship created, uh, that, uh, would justify, uh, a variance from, um, from this standpoint. So at this time, I'd like to put it up for, uh, both, um, all of those in favor, uh, I need that to say, okay, right, they have a motion in second. To approve or denied.
I make a motion to decline the variance for the, uh, the carport.
Can I second that motion?
It is. About the second, that West Mar variant, uh, for carport, that sixteen oh nine School Drive, denied. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
All those, all those opposed, okay? It has been properly moved and seconded, uh, that the request of variance for the carport at sixteen oh nine School Drive, uh, is denied.
Hmm, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Donna. Uh, second on the agenda for tonight is, I believe, another request, um, for a portable carport, uh, at six hundred Lehman Drive. The petitioner are Robert and Betty Kennison. Robert, Betty, are you present?
Yes.
Robert and Betty are present, my name is Mark Perry, and I'm helping them present this, if that's okay with the commission?
I believe it's okay with the commission, anybody, uh, not in there? Okay. Yeah, that's it, I, the meeting, uh, is now open for discussion, uh, so if you would, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, committee members, my name is Mark Perry, and Bob and Betty Kennison, uh, are requesting, uh, a variance for a, uh, a store, a portable, uh, storage building, not really storage building, but a garage, uh, they've lived at Lehman Drive since seventy-three, uh, Bob was in the Air Force for twenty-one and a half years. Uh, Betty, Betty was a state employee for a little over twenty, uh, after his service in the, in the Air Force, he was with Falcon Jet for twenty-five years. So they're longtime residents, they've made a couple of improvements on the house expansion, and they've actually had the garage closed in. And if y'all have seen the house, they've, they've poured a nice driveway, and they want to, uh, add a, uh, a parking, uh, cover, so they can park their car. Uh, both of them are, you know, they're, they're maturing, they're, uh, you know, mid-seventies, and, uh, being able to get in and out of the rain, and parking the, when it's raining is, would be advantageous for them. The, uh, this, this cover, it actually is one of the nicest ones on the market, it will match the color of the house. Uh, the pictures, I forwarded some pictures, uh, late this afternoon, I don't know if y'all have received those, but it, it has a better design and look of what the actual, uh, carport will be. It will, uh, it'll only be, the, the legs will only be four feet tall showing from where the opening is from the first panel coming down. So it'll have the arched, uh, roof line, and then it'll have, uh, panels coming down on one side, on the sides, where you have about four feet of footage open. And it will be the same color as the house. You know, they, the sign, the, the yard was posted, I don't think they had any, uh, anybody from the, from the neighborhood complain. There are a couple of others on the street, uh, on Lehman Street, but this one by far exceeds and, uh, kind of steps up the game a little bit. With that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Question? I have a first question, Jimmy, I, I, I don't just get, uh, any notice of the setback required.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, again, this one, their house is pretty close to the build line, the front of their house structure, so any much, much distance at all, which this will be, would be in that build line. So that, again, that's why they requested a variance, to exceed that ordinance.
Jimmy, for clarification, you're saying that this, uh, this carport will exceed the build line?
That is correct.
Okay. Not sure if it's relevant or not, do we, but do we know if the other carports that were addressed, um, as a description in this meeting, do those carports exceed the build line as well, or what, what's up with those?
From what I saw in the pictures, uh, driving down the road today, um, I believe they, yes, they would be in violation as well. I, I haven't had time to research whether or not they was requested a variance, or whether or not they've given a permit or anything of such and such. But, uh, to my knowledge, I think, uh, Secretary City Clerk, uh, Susan looked up, Davit looked up, um, any variances for front yard carports, and I don't believe she could find any in the last several years. Is that correct, Susan?
The research that we did showed that, first of all, the last three or four, I believe it was three, uh, variance requests were denied. And prior to that, and the other addresses that we were given to research were illegal, we couldn't find anything on them, they had no request for variance.
I have a copy of, uh, of the last, uh, three requests, uh, one was made on, uh, oh five, uh, two thousand and twenty, that was denied. Uh, and exactly as to that, it was model four box, the new, oh, up scratch code. Yet on, on, on the second request, uh, it was, uh, a six twelve, two thousand and seventeen, for, uh, a variance denied on eight, uh, reason, the land, also denied. And, uh, and the next one was October twelve, two thousand and fifteen, uh, for fifteen hundred, uh, for the people. Uh, that request was also denied, that's the information.
Uh, Chairman Brown, this is, uh, Mark Stroud, um, I was wondering if I'd be able to speak, um, as a, as a, a planning commissioner or chairman?
Sure, well, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the, um, the hardship, it seems to be, from what I'm hearing, so far, the hardship seems not connected to the property, and, and as the Board of Variants, the alleged hardship has to be unique to the property, and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district of the neighborhood, in other words, they're in a neighborhood where it's pretty well cookie cutter, all of the lots are pretty well squared away. Um, this is in row with another one, so, um, the, the fair fact that there's probably some more that are not correct is immaterial to what he's asking for. And because they have a personal hardship, that doesn't rise to the standard of a variance in, and according to the, uh, code, the state code, because the state code says, uh, the hardship due to circumstances that, uh, that's unique to the individual property under consideration, and that's the Arkansas Code, twenty-ten, Title fourteen, subtitle three, chapter fifty-six, uh, and subchapter four. This is, uh, this is where, uh, the Board of Variants gets its, um, direction as far as to go, it's, it's a, a look bigger, uh, B, section B, lowercase i, lowercase a, if somebody wants to look it up, and, and it, and so far, what I've heard from, uh, Mr. Perry is that they have personal deals, and that doesn't need to be, uh, interjected into this property because the variance has to deal with the property alone. And so there is a, that, that's where, you know, I just want to interject that.
Okay, any other comment?
Um, I don't know if it's relevant to this, to this variance or not, but there's a, is there a reason that the, the other three examples on that Lehman Drive, that those, uh, carports are still standing? Even though they have not met a, um, they have not been provided with a approval, and they're already passing, uh, they're, they're basically not, they're not restricted to have those, is there a reason that those are still standing? Or is code enforcement lacking on those, or what is that? I'd appreciate the answer, thank you.
Commissioner, I cannot address that because I, so I just went by and witnessed them today, and I'll have to research that and, and find, you know, research it, and then I'll get back with you. If, if we found in violation, we would send a letter out, if they wasn't permitted and wasn't given a variance, we would have to send a letter out, tell them that they're in violation, and they'd have to be removed, or apply for a variance, is a normal step.
Was it, was it just mentioned, though, by, uh, another board member, that those, that those houses were not approved by a variance, and they were, that they were out of, uh, restrictions?
If you're referring to, uh, Commissioner or Chairman, uh, Stroud, is that what you're referring to?
No, I thought the, uh, the, another, I'm not sure which commissioner, they referred to the other, the other two examples that were given us, too, there was a example, five oh one, five seventeen, and in the, uh, in about eight hundred Lehman Drive, were those examples given to us, that those, uh, that those carports were not, um, approved and/or, um, accepted by the, uh, that those were accepted by the, uh, Bill, uh, Board of Adjustment?
I can verify that Ms. Davit researched them and doesn't have record of them being approved by planning commission, or, excuse me, Board of Adjustments. But as far as anything else, I'd have to go pull back records to verify, it wasn't accidentally given a permit. That, that's always could be a possibility, because I wouldn't want to say without certainty that we don't have no other issues, but I will research it tomorrow.
Um, from here, uh, let's say if, if the Board of Adjustment, if, if those three properties were not up to code and not approved, does that mean that they were, that they will get a letter and or notification that those structures had to be taken down?
That'd be correct.
Or, and, and unless approved on a, unless they apply for a variance, right?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any, I'm just, just kind of to piggyback a little bit off of Commissioner, uh, Mark, uh, his comments regarding, uh, that this variance, uh, variance request applies strictly, uh, to the property or the lot of six, uh, six hundred Lehman Drive, uh, and, uh, for your concern tonight, the board is for, uh, uh, is, the request is for, is for this particular, uh, property. Um, not really sure whether we, uh, proper, proper justification or a hardship being created, uh, to generate from, uh, uh, the requirements of this specific, specific, uh, address. Um, any other, uh, comments from any other members before we give a couple votes?
Yeah, I'd like clarification, maybe Miss, Miss Davit can answer this one, did or did the three others not, or did they get approved by the Board of Adjustments?
No, sir, they did not, in the last ten years, we've had three requests, all of them were denied.
Okay, with that, I would make a motion that we decline the, the, uh, variance.
Second? Wait a second.
A second that?
Okay, it is the move properly seconded, that we deny, uh, the variance for six hundred Lehman Drive, all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Can I, can I ask the board, uh, a question?
I think that would be appropriate, yes, once you ask.
If, if they come back and want to attach it to the house, would that make any kind of difference if they request a variance on that as well?
Jimmy, I, I don't think that would be, what, 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 what do you, what do you hear on that?
Would that, would that make it, would that give a different light on it if we attach it to the house and make it additional, uh, structure that's attached to the house instead of a carport?
I'm not very sure, but now, uh, the house, uh, the house sits on the property in six hundred Lehman Drive, correct?
That is correct.
And the variance is on the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm not sure if that would make a difference, Jimmy, what do you, what do you think?
Mark, are we coming out? Are we still coming off, are we still coming off the house with a metal building? Are we going to come out with a house with a brick infrastructure that matches the house?
Well, we'd, we'd come back still with a metal building. So if we came back with a metal building, if we attach it to the house, does that, does that change the, the request in any way? Or change the, you know, the ability to be able to attach it?
Well, the request would still be for a setback variance, just crossing the front build line. That's what I'm understanding.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, the setback. So any, anything that's built over the setback, isn't it?
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay, so.
So the answer to that would be, I think, would be no.
All right. If, uh, so if we come back and, and we want to put a permanent structure to, you know, brick, match the, you know, to match the house, like, you know, Tanner, Mr. Rupert, what you were saying is, you know, come back and build it to match the house. That would be more in line with conducive with code.
Not necessarily, I don't, I'm for, for what we pass and for what we have proved in the past, not necessarily conducive to code, but more matching along with the house and then that it applies to the actual structure of the home to make it more conducive of the appearance of the home and nearby properties.
Okay, Mr. Stroud is shaking his head no, uh, that?
No, okay, uh, you're talking about a setback. Now, you're talking about two different things now, but initially the, the, we were talking about a setback variance and now you're bringing in property. You, you can't mix the two. The, the variance is for any property that would do an undue hardship, that would give you an undue hardship. And there's nothing about the property creating hardship, but you're putting yourself into a hardship by going over the setback line. So no matter what you build, if it's over the setback line, you, in other words, you, that, uh, that part that you're wanting to put, um, that you're wanting to put on, if you, uh, like, cut it off to where it fit just inside the setback line, it would be fine, no matter whether you attached it to the building or lot. Not because it's the setback line that we're talking about.
Okay, I'm with you. I appreciate that.
All right, I think we're at, uh, we had heard, uh, the approval of those objecting. It has been moved and properly seconded, um, and that this setback be, um, that have questioned that the variance be for six hundred Lehman Drive be denied, uh, um, it is, that, that the, the variance is, is denied. Any other comments, questions, any further business from anyone for tonight?
Thank you, Commissioner Stroud for, uh, having with that clarification, sir. Thank you.
Communication, could I have, have a motion to adjourn?
Second. Or I, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It is moved properly second that, uh, that we adjourn. Let me know if you can. Does this have any comments on? Being adjourned.
Oh, one of them is with, you know, they are love that.
Ms. Davids?
Yes.
Could you give me a, could you give me a call? Hello, Ms. Davids?
Yes.
Could you give me a call when you get a chance?
Who is this?
Can you call me when you get a chance, please?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That one make any difference? Okay. I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna say thank you.
Thank you.
I thank you people for taking my request. Yes, ma'am. Sorry we couldn't help you. Guess I'm off of it. Guess I'm hung up.
Hey, Will. Mayor Thompson here. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, um, you know, we're not having a planning commission meeting.
No, I didn't know. No, I did not know that. We were still doing the seventeen.
A minute ago, but, uh, we're not having a planning commission meeting. The item was pulled, so, uh, you're off duty.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Mayor. See you next time.
Our, the planning commission meeting has been canceled. The item was pulled late this afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was five o'clock, so, yeah.
All right, thanks. All right, bye-bye.
Bye, Mr. Brown. Bye, Susan.
Bye.
Bye.